Oh geez, I think you're not the only one.
Mr. River.
What's that? Actually, I'm having a fine time. They, the attorneys were having a little bit of a problem. All right, one, two, three, four. All right, I'd like to call to order the Lansing City Council meeting for January 7th, 2019, and I will call the roll. Councilmember Dunbar, councilmember Garza, councilmember Hussein, councilmember Jackson, councilmember Spatafor, councilmember Spitzley, councilmember Washington, councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present in quorum. And just a note for those who are watching, our city charter states that until the city council elects a president each year, I preside at their meetings, so that will occur in a few minutes, but in the meantime, I have the gavel here. So let's rise for a moment of meditation and pledge of allegiance, and I would like folks to keep in mind Toni Thompson. She was a dedicated city assessing employee of 22 years and passed away on December 19th. So we are to the election of the city council president and vice president for the year We do have a resolution that was reported from the committee of the whole that would elect councilmember Wood as president and councilmember Spatafor as the vice president. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution? Thank you, councilmember Spitzley. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, I would move to divide.
Okay. The council rules provide that if a resolution can reasonably be divided, it can occur, so we will take a separate vote on the offices of president and vice president. Is there any discussion? We'll take the, we can discuss the whole thing and then we'll vote on the president and then the vice president. Councilmember Spitzley. Hearing, seen no discussion. All those in favor of electing councilmember Wood as president, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, please say nay. Okay, I have six yays, two nays. All right, and now on the other portion of the resolution to elect councilmember Spatafor as the vice president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, President Wood and Vice President Spatafor. And you can have your gavel.
Thank you very much.
We are to the approval of printed council proceedings of December 10th.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the approval of the printed council proceedings for December 10th, 2018.
I have a motion on there. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
And we are to the consideration of late items.
Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the suspension of council rule nine to allow the consideration item.
We have motion for a late item, and that late item...
It is, I'm sorry, it's a resolution to hold a public hearing for Monday, January 28th at 7:00 PM for approving or opposing the conveyance of the title of Townsend Parking Ramp.
Okay, and that is for referral for the 14th, correct?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay. I haven't heard anything differently. So with that, we have a motion for the late item. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And then during the referrals, we'll take that up.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember comments. Councilmember Hussein.
Just have some meeting announcements. First and foremost, we will be having our third ward constituent contact meeting this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. For the past several meetings, we have actually hosted those over at 5825 Wise Road, which is the South Side Community Center, so we will again be meeting there. The intention of this meeting at the outset of 2019 is just to really kind of reflect on some of the work that we have done collectively over the past few years, to kind of prioritize things that we want to see moving forward, and then to really plan for some success in terms of those things. So hope to see you again 10:00 to 12:00 noon this Saturday at 5825 Wise Road. Beyond that, Avro Woods Neighbor Association will be meeting this Wednesday, January 9th, from 6:30 PM to, I believe it's 8:00 PM, at the Avro School Library. That's at 3201 Avro Drive. If you're wondering if you're part of that association, the boundaries are north to Cooley Drive, east to Deerfield, south to West Holmes, and then west to South Waverly. So if you are a resident, whether you're a homeowner, whether you're a renter, in that, in those boundaries, you are actually part of that association, and we of course would love to see you at that meeting, again, January 9th at 6:30 PM. And then lastly, the Lansing Eaton Neighborhood Organization will be having their neighborhood, their monthly neighborhood meeting this Thursday, which is January 10th, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. That is at Wood Creek Achievement Center at 4,000 Wood Creek Lane. And again, when we talk about boundaries, we're looking south to Waverly, west, I should say, the boundary starts at South Waverly, so if you are actually north of, let me start that over, north of Jolly, west of Waverly, all the way to the Grand River, you are part of the Lansing Eaton Neighborhood Organization if you live in the city of Lansing. So we'd love to see you at that as well.
Thank you, councilmember Hussein. Are there any other announcements? I have two quick ones. The Genesee Neighborhood Association will be meeting tomorrow night at Grace Lutheran Church, and that's at the corner of Martin Luther King and LaPierre. We have had some incidences over there, and LPD will be there to discuss some of the problems that have been happening in that neighborhood. Also, on January 22nd, Rejuvenating South Lansing will be holding their monthly meeting, and that's at 6:30 at the Alfreda Smith South Side Community Center in the Sandy Allen Room, and Barb Kimmel from the Development Office will be there to speak to the group. Any other councilmember comments? Seeing none?
Thank you, President Wood. I just want to take a moment and make sure that folks have heard the Phase Two of the Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center License Application Period. I have delayed the application period for that because we had announced that it would begin in February. However, we will not be complete with the Phase One, Round One of those applications, and I think it would be a disservice to the community and to the applicants if we still have applications that are pending, and they would be put in a position of not knowing whether or not they should apply in the second phase. So I think we need to complete that phase before we move forward. We did have a period for people to provide written comments on, on any changes that they would like to see in Phase Two within the ordinance. We didn't receive any written comments within that period, although we did receive some verbal comments, including from some councilmembers and others, and so we are working on some changes that will take place that I think will be positive changes for the community in terms of how we score those, but again, within the existing ordinance. So I look forward to finalizing that and sharing that, and I will keep folks informed when we are ready to set these 30-day period for that Phase Two application. Thank you, President Wood. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details. Seeing no one, speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, and the only legislative matter tonight already occurred, but you can still comment on it on the blue sheet that is the election of the president and vice president. I'll give you about another 10 seconds to jump up if you want to sign up, and with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Madam President. First, let me offer my congratulations to you on another year at the helm of the city council, and my congratulations to Vice President Spatafor. Looking forward to another great year. In terms of things that are going on here in the city of Lansing, we've got our neighborhood grants and our neighborhood in bloom applications are due on Friday, February 1st. We're going to have a neighborhood grants workshop held on Thursday, January 17th at 6:30 PM at the Foster Community Center during the, during the neighborhood, the mayor's neighborhood advisory board meeting. Neighborhoods can find more information about these programs online or by contacting our Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement. Neighborhoods can also apply to host one of the summer concerts in the park. You can bring this event to your neighborhood by submitting the brief application. Emily Stevens at our Department of Parks and Recreation has more information, and you need to complete your neighborhood application by February 1st. On Friday, January 18th, from noon to 1:00 here in this chamber, we'll have the, the annual Martin Luther King Jr., the 39th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Observance. This year's theme is Be The Change You Wish To See In The World, and we'll have speakers and a reception here following the program, so anyone who can make it, you know, I've been here to a few of these, and I know many of you have been to more than I have, so that's always a great program. I know our HRCS does a lot with that. And then additionally, we'll have our, our annual MLK holiday celebration at the Lansing Center on January 21st, which is always a great event, and hope to see everybody there. I think it starts at 11:00, 11:00 AM at the Lansing Center. And then finally, on Saturday, January 19th, the 13th Annual Cardboard Classic Sled Race happens at Guyer Park. Sled construction should consist primarily of cardboard, paint, glue, and/or duct tape. Registration fee is $5, and proceeds go to the Guyer Community Center and LCC Radio, so it's a lot of fun. Enjoy the races and creativity and maybe a few of the crashes. Registration is at 1:00 PM, and the race starts at 2:00. So more fun things going on in Lansing. And then as people, as the snow comes, which I assume it will at some point, remember to check out the Lansing Living Magazine. We had a new one go out recently, and it's got just a ton of activities and things that we have going on here in the city of Lansing. So that's, that's what we got going on. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Did you want to mention the mobile food pantry?
Oh yeah, the mobile food pantry is coming up this Saturday morning at St. Gerard's Church. We have them monthly, and they are, they're always a great event, a chance for people to, to come out and grab some food that they wouldn't be able to get otherwise. So thank you for the reminder.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and again, the only item that meets that definition tonight is the election of president and vice president, and I have Loretta Stanaway and then Elaine Wamboldt.
This is just my personal opinion. Sadly and unfortunately, election to office does not automatically equate to leadership skills. It just means someone had a good PR machine. President company, present company accepted. There certainly have been times since I've been coming down here to council where there have been councilpersons elected to office with either poor or nonexistent leadership skills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elaine Wamboldt and then Mary Reynolds.
Elaine Wamboldt, South Lansing resident. Mayor Shore, councilmembers, Happy New Year. I'd also like to congratulate President Wood and Vice President Spatafor. I'm sure this is going to be a very productive year, and with a lot of positive activities through the city council. I know that you're all going to work hard, and my public comment during committee of the whole was not intended on insulting anyone. It was my personal opinion of who I chose and thought would be the best representation for me as a third ward person, but I am sure that it's going to be a great year, and again, I want to congratulate President Wood and Vice President Spatafor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary Reynolds passes. Okay, then we are to, we, speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, that's the yellow sheet, so please sign in if you haven't already, and we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that all the items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
We have minutes of the boards, commissions, and authorities.
Those will be placed on file.
A notification of real estate purchase agreements placed on file?
That will go to committee of the whole. We intend on taking this up at the committee of the whole on the 18th, and then looking for a public hearing and passage on the 28th to meet deadlines that we have. So we'll, you should have received those in an email at the end of last year.
Okay. Liquor license, Tannen LLC for transfer of a Class C license at 1620 East Michigan Avenue.
General Services.
Letters from the mayor regarding the appointment of James Huthook as a member of the Saginaw Street Quarter Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
Appointment of Jeff McAlvy as a member of the Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
Committee of the whole.
Appointment of Stephen Young as a member of the Elected Officers Compensation Commission.
Committee of the whole.
A deficit elimination plan for the Special Assessment Capital Project Fund.
And that'll go to committee of the whole.
Fee changes, the Todd Martin Youth Leadership Tennis.
And that'll go to Public Service Committee.
Donation acceptance for the June Nosman Francis Park Fund.
That'll go to Ways and Means.
We have the reappointments, Cassie Alley to the Elected Officers Compensation Commission and Christine Zarkovich to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
Committee of the whole.
And then we have, sorry, we have the accompanying action request from the mayor, the late item regarding the Townsend Parking Ramp Sale.
Committee of the whole.
Communications and petitions, we have a letter from Liquor Control regarding the transfer of an SDD and SDM from Pavnit Inc. to LM Liquor Store at 2110 West Jolly.
General Services.
And transfer of 2018 SDD with Sunday sales, and transferring the location from the city of Leslie to the Kroger at 443 Mall Court.
General Services.
Claim appeal, June Marby for $518 in trash fees.
General Services.
And a claim appeal, Stephen Hanks for $1,824 in trash fees.
General Services.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Are there any remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I have just a very quick question. You stated that on, in regard to the notification of real estate purchase agreement, that we would be discussing that in committee of the whole on January 18th?
14th.
Fourteenth.
If I said 18th, I am sorry.
Okay, and then it will be up for passage on the 28th?
We have to set the public hearing, and we'll have that on the 28th.
Got it.
And I believe the timeline, Mr. City Attorney, is...
We're going to have to, on the sale itself, will have to be a week after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments by councilmembers? Mayor Shore, any comments?
Okay, we are back to public comments on city government-related issues. I have Stephen Kukolka and then Elaine Wamboldt.
Happy New Year, City Council. Let's have a good New Year for the, the city of Lansing. I just have a couple of things, just real quick, and I don't know if they can be addressed verbally to me, but I talked to the, the city clerk before the meeting tonight. I don't know who my councilmember is, because three wards kind of go together where I live, and so I'm still a little bit confused on that, and maybe that can be brought to my attention so I can be in contact with my city councilmember, which would be very helpful. And the other thing is, um, these groups that are, we're putting together for like the South Side of Lansing and stuff like that, is that, is that including like the trash pickup? Because the South Side of Lansing is looking really bad right now, and, and I want to be one of the people that, I don't just talk the talk, I walk that walk, I do pick up trash, but it seems like it's not given enough emphasis for the city overall to look for the beauty of our city, because our city is beautiful, I love it. I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be here for, until, you know, I'll probably be buried at St. Joseph Cemetery, but the, the whole idea is how we can, like for neighborhoods or, or like the South Side of Lansing, like maybe, like they do, like when they, like when, when, like if, like the Spartans score a touchdown in the third quarter, everybody gets a free fry at McDonald's or Wendy's or something. Can we, can we encourage people like that? Is that a possibility through the city of Lansing that we, that there'd be a bonus to keep, you know, instead of like taking that McDonald's cup, or I'm not, I don't mean to use McDonald's or Wendy's or Burger King, whatever, and you just throw it out the window and just say to yourself, you know what? If we keep our area clean, we all get free fries on Wednesday at McDonald's or something. I don't know, it, something needs to be done, because it's getting to the point to where it's like a third world country on the South Side. I, in Miami, I've been to Miami before, and it's starting to replicate that city on the outskirts, not on the inner part, but on the outskirts, and it's the outskirts of Lansing. It needs something that needs to be addressed, because, and like I've said in the past, we have to start from the bottom and work our way up to some extent, because, you know, besides having the street sweepers out and, and having like companies coming in or, or other entities coming in to, to keep the city looking appropriate. This is my playground, just like it's your playground, and I'm sure you're disgusted just like I am to see that amount of trash on the side of the streets. Anyway, I'm glad I let that out. So let's just, let's, let's get 2019, let's get energized, you know, as a city. We're not going nowhere. You all, you all love your job, I love living here. Let's get Lansing energized to where we make it like the model city for the rest of the country to follow. Can, can we have them kind of ideas in our heads? Because I think that's what we have an opportunity to achieve as a city. So, and that's all I had tonight, but God bless us, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And your ward councilmember is councilmember Garza, and he will talk to you after the council meeting, and you also have four at large, and they are around on this side of the dais, so...
Thank you very much.
I'm sure Councilmember Garza will speak to you, and...
All right.
He works with neighborhoods, so he'll be able to talk to you about if there's an organization near where you live to, to make sure that you're part of it, and he does have his second Saturday meetings, that they come together at the fire station on Miller Road, so...
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
That's why you're president.
Okay, we have Elaine Wamboldt and then Loretta Stanaway.
Elaine Wamboldt, South Side resident. At the last council meeting, I had requested that the city of Lansing considering an opt-out for the city of Lansing on the commercial growing and selling of recreational marijuana. There are 60 cities that have already opted out and reported them to Laura. There are others who have opted out but have not reported yet. I'm sure there's going to be more and more. There are too many unknowns with recreational marijuana, and we are still in a terrible mess with the medical marijuana. I think it would be wise of the city to consider opting out until at least the state has put in their guidelines and their requirements, and then be like other cities are being cautious and trying to do what is best for their city. I have made a copy of those cities to distribute, one to Mayor Shore and one to each council member. I'll be back again about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, and Brian's coming to get those from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway and then Mary Reynolds.
Okay, I thought we were trying to get away from sudden, out-of-the-blue activities, and here we have, at least for us constituents out here, out-of-the-blue, a potential sale of the Townsend Street Ramp to the state of Michigan. And maybe you guys have been talking about it, but we haven't been hearing about it. So I wonder, you know, what's the rush? Why do we have to have a late item agenda and then go to so quickly a public hearing and all the rest of it? This may be a good deal, it may be a bad deal, I don't know yet. It's, the devil's going to be in the details, and I'll be looking forward to hearing what those details are. I understand that contrary to what I thought, the public does not have the option to vote on a sale, but the money that would be taken in from a proposed sale would go to parking only, as it's an enterprise fund, and that money is restricted, as I understand it. So if I'm incorrect on any of that, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Mary Reynolds.
A couple of questions tonight, please. On the sale of Townsend, Townsend Street, South, parking, is there a protocol and agency, is there's a, there's a procedure that goes through when you put something on the market for sale that belongs to the city, correct? Okay, so there's no surprises in that?
It's your, your...
Answer me. Is there any surprises?
This is your time to talk, and I can answer at the end.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'm going down the road. No, I don't think I should say this. I always have felt, as long as I've lived in the city of Lansing, that the mayor and my council have got the government put together correctly, or God knows, the media let us know, to, to do these different things that have to be done with the competence and the procedures and the legalities that have to take place. This is why we have our Mr. Smurka sitting there. He is our legal man. He's not going to let us walk into a swamp. So maybe it's because at 84, I haven't got a lot of time to go over a lot of stuff like this, but I really believe you have my vote of confidence that you know what you're doing, or you wouldn't be doing it. Do you understand what I'm trying to tell you? You can all shake your heads, yes or no? Because that's my last sentence.
And, and you're, you're done with your comments?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. The documentation for the sale of Townsend Ramp is on the clerk's website under...
Documents placed on file.
So those can be found there. This is a matter that the administration has been working with the state, and there was quite lengthy article a couple of weeks ago... was quite lengthy article a couple of weeks ago on this, and the, I think the mayor would like to address this at this time.
Well, and up until the very end of the year, there was really nothing to share, because there was, there was nothing. The money got, the proposal came to us, and the money got put into a supplemental appropriations bill, and now that that has passed and was signed into law shortly before New Year, now we have a proposal that we need to act on, and we wanted to get it to council immediately, so we got it before, you know, we got it as soon as we had it ready. Again, it happened right before the New Year, we got it to council right as soon as the New Year passed, and we asked for this to be placed as a late item to get it introduced so that the public would have a chance to see it. The council president has indicated she would hold a public hearing, and then there will be some time, and then we would, the council would act on it. So, we wanted to make sure that we had enough time for the public to review it and to go through the appropriate process, but we will explain during the next meeting, I believe, the Committee of the Whole meeting, our opinions on, on the proposal of the sale to Michigan State Senate. So, it came together real quick at the end of the year, and now we would like to go through the process to, to do what's best for the city of Lansing.
Okay. I need to just say one thing, I just need to say one thing.
Just for the public's edification, this will be discussed on the 14th...
I'm doing this for the people at home.
Yes, just a second. This will be discussed on the 4, January 14th. It will be discussed again on January 28th.
Okay.
It will be discussed again on February 4th, and then a vote will be taken on February 11th. So, there's, there's ample time for the public to weigh in on this and to understand what the information is. Okay?
Okay. I can handle that, Carol. That's good.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anything else for the good? All right, we are adjourned.